Farmington Hills, and welcome to our October 13th, 2025 City Council meeting. I'm calling this session to order, and we always begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. This evening, we are going to be led by Beth Hewlett, who you'll be seeing again in a few minutes regarding an epilepsy awareness month proclamation. If you could please lead us, Beth.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council members Aldred?
Here.
Boloware?
Here.
Bridges?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Dwyer?
Here.
Noel?
Here.
Mayor Rich?
Here.
Thank you.
That then takes us to approval of the regular session agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, move the council approve the agenda as published.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there support?
Support.
We have motion and support. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Carries. First of two proclamations tonight. The first is recognizing October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It will be read by Ms. Noel.
Oh, no. I had the other one.
Oh, I beg your pardon. It will be read by Ms. Boloware.
Great, thank you. This is a proclamation for the Breast Cancer Awareness Month this October 2025, whereas approximately one in eight United States women, about 13%, will develop invasive breast cancer over the course of their lifetime. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to increasing public knowledge about the importance of early detection. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed among American women, about 32% of new cancer diagnoses in women are breast cancer, and about 16% of patients are younger than 50. And whereas in 2025, approximately 317,000 women will be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer, as well as nearly 60,000 new cases of non-invasive breast cancer. And whereas female breast cancer incident rates have slowly increased since the mid 2000s, but overall mortality rates continue to decline due to increased awareness, treatment advances, and earlier detection, the mammography screening. And whereas there are 4 million women living in the United States with a history of breast cancer, including women currently being treated, including women currently being treated, and those who have finished undergoing treatment. Now therefore be it resolved that Teresa Rich, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Farmington Hills, and encourage everyone to learn their risks for breast cancer, undergo regular screenings for early detection, and if diagnosed, talk to their healthcare providers about available treatment options. And this proclamation will be provided to the Corwell Health Farmington Hills Hospital Breast Cancer Center. Is there anyone from Corwell to accept the proclamation? If not, I will give it to our Assistant City Manager, and we'll be certain that they receive it in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Boloware. This then takes us to our next item of proclamation, recognizing November 2025 as epilepsy awareness month, and it will be read by Ms. Noel.
Thank you. Whereas epilepsy is a neurological condition that affects the brain and causes reoccurring seizures, impacting more than 110,000 individuals in Michigan, including approximately 1% of children. And whereas epilepsy is the fourth most common neurological disorder, yet it remains widely understood, often leading to stigma, discrimination, and barriers to education, employment, and quality of life. And whereas one in 26 people will develop epilepsy in their lifetime, and seizures can occur in anyone, at any age, and at any time. And whereas public awareness and education about seizure recognition and first aid are critical to ensuring safety, inclusion, and dignity for people living with epilepsy. And whereas epilepsy awareness month provides an important opportunity to support individuals and families affected by epilepsy, raise awareness of S U D E P, sudden expected death in epilepsy, and promote the need for research toward improved treatments and a cure. Now therefore be it resolved that Teresa Rich, Mayor of the City of Farmington Hills, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as epilepsy awareness month in Farmington Hills, and encourage community members to learn about epilepsy, support individuals living with this disorder, and support efforts to diagnose and treat seizures, find cures, and save lives. And this will be received by Beth Hewlett.
Only if you want.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity for you to get behind families and individuals that live with epilepsy in their lives. It is a great honor to be able to have the proclamation, and in memory of those who have lost their lives to seizures, sudden unexpected death in epilepsy. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This then takes us on to announcements, presentations from city boards, commissions, and public officials, anyone wishing to speak this evening. Okay. Correspondents, anyone have correspondence they would like to share? I would want to say that we've all received something about a situation regarding beagles. And so Ms. Mandora, if maybe you could address that, because we all received it, and I know that you provided a response.
This is for the, I'm sorry, was, for the pets?
The pets, yes.
Yes. Yes, we understand that there are concerns about animal welfare and how much our community cares about animals in the community, and we do as well. We want you to know that we've taken these concerns seriously. Both our police department and zoning division staff have conducted thorough interviews and investigations, working closely with our Oakland County Animal Control Partners. Oakland County maintains jurisdiction in these cases. Multiple site visits by these professionals have confirmed that the dogs are healthy, well-fed, have access to fresh water, and live in appropriate shelter that meets all legal standards. We're committed to continuing to monitor this situation and ensuring that all animals in our community are treated humanely and in accordance with legal standards.
And so this is in follow-up. There's been email correspondence to us regarding a situation with regard to some beagles. And so that is the response that we have for y'all. That then takes us to the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine, administrative, or non-controversial by the City Council, and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the items may be removed from the consent agenda for consideration. They will be read, a very long list of them, will be read by our Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item nine, recommended approval of consultant for the Grand River Corridor Streetscape and Landscape Plan to Grissom, Metz, entry, associates in the amount of $53,878, CMR 10-2536. Item 10, recommended approval of purchase of Glock handguns for the Police Department to Kessler Police Supply in the amount of $145,285, CMR 10-25137. Item 11, recommended approval award of bid for the replacement of rotary broom mower in Maltahead to AIS Construction Equipment in the amount of $106,497.51, CMR 10-25138. Number 12, recommended approval of purchase of ABI Forest groomer zero turn vehicle to Lads in the amount of $50,591, CMR 10-25139. Number 13, recommended approval award of bid for as needed auto parts to Official Auto Parts, Inc., Michigan, Filter and Fleet Supply and Dealer Auto Parts Sales, Inc., for three years with the optional renewal, CMR 10-25140. Item 14, recommended approval of award of bid to Chloride San to Tri-City Aggregates, Inc., in the amount not to exceed the annual budgeted amount with the approval extension, CMR 10-25141. Item 15, recommended approval award of contract for Kendallwood Number Three Subdivision Water Wayne Replacement Project to Murphy Pipeline Construction LLC, DBA, DND, Water Insurer in the amount of $3,435,474, CMR 10-2542. Item 16, recommended approval of agreement for payroll support services with Manor LLC in the amount not to exceed $70,000 for the remainder of fiscal year 2025-26, and for the amount not to exceed $15,000 for fiscal year 26-27 with the option to renewal, CMR 10-2543. Number 17, recommend approval award of tough books for the Fire Department to Baycom, Inc., in the amount of $116,796.95, CMR 10-25-144. Number 18, recommend approval award of bid for as needed tire maintenance and service to Alma Tire Services, Inc., in the estimated amount of $50,000 per year with the extensions, CMR 10-25145. Number 19, recommended approval of purchase of a rain bird pump station for the Farmington Hills Golf Course to Mid-Ohio Electric Company, Inc., in the amount of $167,830, CMR 10-25146. Number 20, recommend approval award of bid for automotive fluids to Raleigh Wholesale in the estimated amount of $40,000 with possible extensions, CMR 10-25147. Number 21, recommended adoption of a resolution authorizing the issuance of capital improvement bonds for the purpose of financing capital improvement funds, projects, in the notice of intent to issue bonds, CMR 10-25148. Number 22, recommended approval request for employment under section 10.01a of the City Charter for a guest service assistant, CMR 10-25149. Number 23, recommend approval of a special event permit for the University of Utah Church of Farmington Treats On The Trail Event be held on Sunday, October 26, 2025. Number 24, recommend approval of City Council study session minutes of September 22, 2025. And the last one is number 25, recommended approval of City Council regular session minutes of September 22, 2025. That concludes my report.
Wow, thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion for items nine through 23.
Madam Mayor? Yeah, Madam Mayor, I move that the council approve consent agenda items from nine through 23 as read by the Mayor Pro Tem, Dwyer.
Thank you. There's a motion, is there support?
Support.
Okay, thank you. We have motion and we have support. This is a roll call vote.
Council members Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so now I'm looking for a motion for items 24 and 25, please.
I'll make a motion to approve items 24 and 25, as read by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Why, thank you. Motion and support, Mr. Aldred? Thank you. We have motion and support. Again, a roll call vote.
Council members Bridges?
Abstaining.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, this then takes us to council member comments and announcements. Anyone?
I do.
Ms. Boloware.
Yes. Today is the second Monday in October, and it's also known as Indigenous People Day. And as a member of the Muskogee, or a descendant of the member of the Muskogee Tribe, part of the Cherokee Nation, I take this day to honor my ancestors and to celebrate the Native American culture that has contributed so greatly to this country. And I also ask that we take the time to remember the challenges faced by our indigenous people currently of America. And those challenges include voting rights, the environmental impacts that they're facing in the tribal lands, as well as depression, a high incidence of substance abuse, as well as access to healthcare. But I ask that we remember this day for those people in which I am a part of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bridges?
Yes, I just wanted to compliment the city for a well-run, organized open house. It was excellent. We had over, I mean, how many people were there? Several hundred people there, hundreds of people there. Employees did a terrific job, the departments did a terrific job in displaying Farmington Hills. In fact, I talked to a number of people who were not residents of Farmington Hills. They were very, I mean, it was, one, I'm an outgoing person, so I talked to a lot of different people there, and 50% of the people I talked to were not even residents of Farmington Hills, but come to visit our city to experience our city's open house. So that's a testimony of the city's reputation. In fact, what we have to offer here in Farmington Hills, I was very well pleased with. It was a great day, it was a sunshiny day, and it was a great opportunity to display Farmington Hills. So thank you.
Anyone else? I have two to echo the citywide open house. City staff did great, and thank you to our boards and commissions and a number of other organizations. The library came, Red Cross came, really appreciate the all-hands coming in to help out with that, and I think that meant a lot. And for those of you on boards and commissions, thanks for helping to recruit people to join you. And then the other piece is, I wanted, for the folks who live in the Kendallwood sub, who have had the old Kendallwood property as a staging area for construction for three years in a row, I want you to know that under this consent agenda that we just approved, where we approved the work for the water main for next season, it is not, 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 not going to include Kendallwood property, the old pool property, for staging. So just to let our residents know that, I know that's been a big dissatisfier, and that is done. So I thought you'd want to know that, and for those who celebrate, happy Diwali. That then takes us to the city manager update.
Yes, good evening. I also want to thank Mayor and City Council for their continued support of the citywide open house. Staff look forward to that event. We come in on Saturday to do it, but we really enjoy interfacing with the community and showing off all that the city has to offer. So again, thanks for all that support. The city will be hosting an event for businesses on how to start, grow, invest, and do business with the city. It will be held on Wednesday, October 22, from 10:00 in the morning until noon at The Hawk. Information is available on the city's website, www.fhgov.com, under latest news, or by contacting our Economic Development Director, Kristia Brockway, at 248-871-2500. Thank you. Yes.
Just a couple of road questions, Ms. Mandora. First off, any updates on Nine Mile and Halsted when that may be opening?
Not at the moment, but we can get that for you.
And what about 12 Mile east of, or east of Inkster, or west of Inkster?
Yes, Inkster to Autumn Ridge. My understanding is that that project is in the restoration phase and should be opening in the next week or two, if weather permitting, for them to complete their striping and punch list items.
And then for Drake Road, just north of 11 Mile, they started to do a mill and fill, I think, project on Drake. Well, they did about some part of the road north, and then they stopped, and it's been like that for weeks. And all you've got are these big bumps between where they milled and where they didn't mill on the northbound side of the road. So I'm just curious why they left off, and it's just been weeks that they've done nothing, and that road is a mess because of it.
Okay, I'm noticing Mark Saxuski, our new city engineer, who's giving me the hands up that he can weigh in on those questions for you.
So that contractor started work on Drake Road without any notification of the city. They had inadequate flagging operation, they didn't have traffic control in place, so we shut them down, and that's how much work they had complete before we got to them. But we have been in communication with them, they submitted a plan that we approved just yesterday, and I think they're supposed to be back in the city any day to finish that up. So we have a much better plan with flaggers at all these side streets, we're going to keep the 11 Mile intersection open this time, and try to do it in a much better fashion, safer fashion.
Great, I know there's a lot of unhappy homeowners through that area.
I've talked to a few of them.
Great, thank you for the.
You're welcome.
All right, does that answer your questions?
That's it, thank you.
All right, then that takes us to a number of public hearings tonight, including a couple of items that we have been looking forward to for a very long time. So item four, public hearing and consideration of amendment to planned unit development 2-2023, including revised site plan 67-9-2023, Hunter's Square Shopping Center. Good evening, Ms. Cutler Schmalt.
Good evening. Charmaine Cutler Schmalt, Director of Planning and Community Development, to introduce the item. As you mentioned, this is not the first time that you've seen the proposed project for this site, but it has been a little bit of time, so I'm going to reflect on that before we move forward with our public hearing, which is scheduled for this evening. The property is located on the southwest corner of 14 Mile and Orchard Lake Road. The proposal is for redevelopment of a portion of the shopping center, primarily the northern part of the shopping center. The, I'm going to just reflect on the changes that you are going to see on this revision from the last time it was before council. That was in February, February 12 of 2024. So since that time, modifications to include changing the major anchor C has been divided into two tenants instead of just one. There is a reconfiguration of the configuration of that space, so that would be five major tenants instead of four. We also have changes to the property boundaries with the condo lines. That was shared with council, and we have that included in the packet as well. The reconfiguration and new access through the property, there is a connection between Major C and the existing shopping center. That is a significant change from when you've seen it last. An addition of a cooler to the backside of the south of the shopping center, 503 square feet in total area, in order to accommodate an addition for the Buffalo Wild Wings relocation into that building. There was the removal of a landscape, land bank parking area on the west side of the buildings that was to remain, that will stay as parking in this proposal. In addition to that, the awning for the pharmacy drive-through at the north end of the property was added. So we've seen this plan internally a few times, the changes were significant enough for it to come back through the process. Planning Commission has reviewed and made recommendation for this plan to City Council, and that public hearing is scheduled for this evening. Our representative for the planning consultant to review the items particular to this plan is here to go over that with you. One change from the packet that was sent out last week, there was a correction to the amount of parking. Land bank parking spaces are indicated on this plan that will meet the calculated requirements for the site, so that variant is no longer necessary for this location. I'm going to let Jill speak on it next, and then I believe we have the applicant in the audience before it goes to the public hearing, and then council's deliberation.
And then just before you come in, for those who would like to speak at the public hearing, please remember the processes, complete a blue card, take it over to the clerk, and we will call on you when it is public comment time. And the same thing goes with the other items for public hearing this evening. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Jill Bame, Giffords Webster, the city's planning consultant. As was stated, we kind of had run through the proposed, or the changes that have been proposed by the applicant. They were not significant in terms of thinking about the overall focus of this project, which is to include the outlot developments, to reconfigure the site, to add more green space, to add opportunities for public art, bicycle amenities. And these were, though, changes that did make some impact to the proposed deviations. And so I can just jump right to that, where we would see that the proposed changes to the deviations that were already granted by council through the PUD agreement include relieving the rear setback to 69.59 feet, where 75 feet is required. The south side setback, and that is on the existing building at the south end of the property due to the proposed cooler, that would be 61.03 instead of 75. We would go to the front setback, where the drive-through is proposed, that's the building sort of at the northeast end of the property, that is a 58.92 feet. It's actually a little bit, just a smidge further than it was before, but still it was a change that we called out. Really from the zone loading space amendments, there was some confusion over the location of all of the loading spaces. We noted 15 in our review letter. The applicant indicated 17. There may be some that are underneath the hatching, but we would recommend going with the 15 loading space, and that way we're covered in the event that those are not actual loading spaces. And then as noted, they do meet the parking requirement, so that parking request deviation is no longer needed. And I believe you have a graphic that shows all of those little spaces scattered throughout the site plan, where they are proposing to land bank that parking. In other words, they've identified areas they could add 18 more spaces, but in the current proposal, they'll just develop it out and have that be the green space that they show today. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, quick question, that's it.
Mr. Bridges?
Yeah, I'm noticing your report, you mentioned that, I know a lot of these decisions have already been made by council before, a lot of these.
Yes.
PUD changes, so I'm not trying to rehash those at all. I'm going back to the, I'm looking at the lighting aspect of it. That was in your report.
Yes.
Proposed lighting versus lighting. What's your view of that in regards to proposed lighting exceeding?
It's our understanding that the applicant will comply with the lighting standards. That was not a deviation that was granted by you the last time, and it wasn't discussed by the planning commission, so that's the intent, over the new lighting that will be added. And any opportunities they have to improve the lighting, the existing lighting, I think that would be fair to ask them as well.
Excellent. And so, so again, I just want to repeat, council has been through this discussions about that. We already approved a lot of the substance of change in the PUD agreement on past council meetings, so I want to rehash that. So that's the question I had, basically, that's it.
Thank you. All right, then we'll hear from the proponent.
Right, one quick question. I can't recall when I last viewed this plan, there was a space, a possible space in which public art could be implemented or placed. And you said there are several now.
There's a couple spaces along the front, and I think there's one internal as well, but that might be a, yeah, right up by the white box space. But that might be a, yeah, right up by the white box space there. There's another location there.
All right.
And you reminded me that one of the other things I was going to mention is, one of the things that we talked about was a potential location for a bus stop, a Smart bus stop. And I just wanted to highlight that we have facilitated two conversations with Smart over their routes. And so we're hopeful that at some point, those will get changed, because right now, it doesn't come here anymore. But the scheduler seemed to be very interested in this as a location. And so they've talked about perhaps changing some of the routes around so that this location could get serviced. So that may be something for the future that is a good, a good thing to think about. So.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Mr. Jarboe. Good evening.
Good evening. Frank Jarboe from Semitery Management, owner developer of the site. Thank you for having us. Again, I know that you've seen this plan quite a bit, and we appreciate your patience. We appreciate the planning's patience. We may not always agree, but we're, we get to a road together. As you can see, we've done a couple different revisions to this plan. I want to know that we've taken a really methodical approach to this. What was previously approved, we were part of the process too at that time, but we were under contract to purchase it. So we inherited this project. And we are the third owners of this project, but we're the ones to intend to see it through. But we can tell you that once we figured out there was a couple different nuances, and I didn't think there was too material, but obviously, it was weighing on the planning commission, and then obviously, your approval to city council. One of the major things that we did is, we wanted to keep Buffalo Wild Wings in the center. And in order to accommodate them, the 5,000 square feet that we had next door to five below did not work. So they asked if we could bump out the back and put in the outdoor coolers, hence the intruding on the setback. And, you know, one of the major things that was, was C1, C2, the big box there, was originally 40,000 square feet. And, you know, we entertained that idea. We took it around to a couple retailers. It just didn't catch any wind. So we sat back, said, okay, what can we do here? It's the same square footage overall. We're not eliminating parking, but this is a much easier, better way for the future and the longevity of the center to keep at least eliminating, reducing that square footage of that box. A couple other minor things are the canopy over the pharmacy, but all in all, the majority of this is the same plan. But I'm here to answer any questions, any concerns, anything you need to talk about.
Council, questions? Mr. Bridges.
Yeah, just a quick question. If, I'm not presupposing council's decision tonight. If council moves ahead with this project, when do you expect to start the process of reconstruction?
So we've actually even just started a bit through this process. Planning Commission has been gracious enough to allow us to do some demo and some shut offs. So we've been doing our shut offs and some prep work. So we would hope to demo probably later this month begin, and then we could roll as soon as we get our building permit, which would be towards the end of the year.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Eldred.
Thank you. And just one question on the cooler that you've added for the Buffalo Wild Wings on the south end of the property. Is there any, is there any noise that's going to be generated by that? Or is there any concern in terms of noise generated with the residence, residences to the south?
Very good question. So that is a self-contained cooler. So from what we've been told, that will be on the rooftop, and it'll feed towards that outdoor cooler. It's, it only extends a few feet. It sits on a slab. It's not, I mean, I don't think of it as a structure, but, I mean, some people do. But it's going to be on the rooftop, and it'll be screened too as well.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Then I will open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak should come forward now.
First, public comment.
This is not a public comment. This is just on this project.
Well, I don't think Smart, Smart can move the, move the bus stops. Well, I mean, I've been in both of them. I mean, it'll take, yeah, right now, they're having 50 Mile, I mean, I mean, a detour around my house right now. They saw 50 Mile go to McDonald's last week around my house. Yeah, I mean, oh, yeah, I mean, that's where they're going to build my ears. Oh, yeah, we still don't know what's going in there yet. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm in back of the shopping center, Hunter Ridge Apartments. It's going to make more traffic. Oh, yeah, what's all the, all the changes in this? I really don't know. I either think they're going to put some, some more eating places in there next year. I mean, they probably are. So, I mean, I've been, well, I mean, I mean, well, I mean, I can walk there to that, to that corner. It's right, right, home, right on the corner of it, of that shopping center. I mean, I am. I mean, we have Aldis across the street from there. I mean, some other stores. I mean, with Aldis, I don't know what road I'm digging, but I've been there before. Oh, yeah, too bad, too bad Kroger didn't get that corner. They already had one at 12, 12 and Halsted already. I think they're too cheap to build there. I mean, Kroger.
Thank you, Stephen. And so if we could respond to some of the, let me ask first, anyone else wishing to speak as part of the public hearing? Okay, then I will declare the public hearing closed. And if we could get some answers to Stephen's questions. So we addressed the bus situation, because we heard that they're trying to get the bus station there. But could someone share what are going to be the stores that are going in? I think our folks who are watching this on YouTube are also interested in hearing what some of the retailers are that are going in. Do we know that? Are we able to know that at this point in time? Is that shareable or no?
My name is John Freehill, Director of Design at Semitery. We have a few named tenants that we can share. So obviously, the Meyer is on the, on the corner on the north. Then we have Total Wine, and we have Nordstrom Rack that are committed to the site. And the Outlots, we have Five Guys, Cava, and First Watch. It's all three restaurants. And then, you know, moving forward, we have a lot of interest. Now that we have named tenants, and we're at this stage of this process, and things are going to happen, that we have a lot of people knocking on the door. So.
Okay, that's very helpful, because I know we're asked that just about every week. So thank you for that. Ms. Bolowar.
Yes. Same question, just to add on. I know now there's a Saks Fifth Avenue there. Are they going to stay, will they remain a tenant there, or it's called Off Fifth?
Saks Off Fifth has vacated the site.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, council. Questions or a motion?
Motion, ma'am.
Okay.
Can we move?
Let's make sure that we have no questions. I'm seeing no questions. Please, go ahead.
Counsel, I move that counsel resolved that the application to amend PUD Plan Two 2023, 23, including revised site plan 67-9 2023, both dated revised July 14, 2025, are approved, separate to the following conditions. Number one, all outstanding issues identified in Giffords Webster, August 11, 2025, revised October 8, 2025, review shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the city planner. Number two, all outstanding issues identified in the city engineer, October 8, 2025, inter-office correspondence shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the city engineer. Number three, all outstanding issues identified in the fire marshal, August 7, 2025, inter-office correspondence shall be addressed to the reasonable satisfaction of the fire department. And further resolve that city attorney prepare an appropriate PUD agreement stipulating that the final PUD approval conditions and authorizing the identifying zoning deviation for city council consideration and final approval. That's my motion, ma'am.
We have a motion and support. Any questions? I have one for the city attorney. Should we approve this now? Then when do we see the agreement?
Well, because this project has already been through a prior PUD plan approval, we forechannably are at a point with the PUD agreement that we were most of the way through all of the issues relative to that PUD agreement. And I think we will, we've already had some preliminary conversations with their attorneys about these new changes that are coming through, and we're hoping to move that through very quickly.
So we're thinking the second meeting in October?
Possibly.
Okay.
Well, I see Charmaine standing.
I'm sorry.
At the podium. Perhaps I'm mistaken?
I think you're right on course. Unless we hear that there are significant issues with the language of the agreement from our other inter-office folks, then I think we're on track for the 27th.
Okay. Thank you. This is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same side? Carries?
Mr. Jarboe, we look forward to seeing this development.
Thank you.
Okay, this then takes us to item five, a public hearing and consideration on the introduction of an ordinance amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, zoning, Article II definitions, in order to add new definitions, and Article V site standards, in order to add a new section 34-5.20, public art requirement relating to the inclusion of art with certain new development approvals, zoning text amendment one, 2025. And as this is a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on this matter should complete a blue card and turn it in to the clerk. Good evening.
Good evening. This is a two-parter, as you see on your agenda. We have the zoning text amendment, which has been reviewed and recommended by the planning commission. And then we have its companion piece, which is the city council amendment, which enacts the ability for the arts commission to assist with the approval process for public art that's coming through the system. So we have a number of meetings that have been held on this between city council and planning commission, and even a joint session earlier this summer to review and discuss and hammer out some details for this. We have Giffords Webster here to go through a little bit more of the detail on that. And just a reminder that this is a public hearing, so we would need to hear from the public on that before city council renders any decision. So I'm going to turn it over to Jill.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, this is exciting. You have had a couple, several discussions about public art in the city of Farmington Hills following the adoption of the city's master plan in 2024. I think almost right away, city council started exploring this idea of allowing or requiring public art in private development. We had a couple of meetings with council, study sessions. The planning commission was directed to draft some language, which was done. And then, planning commission and city council met to discuss that language, and there were some additional refinements made. Planning commission did hold their public hearing on this on September 18. So I don't know that I'll belabor the entire set of language, because you've seen it quite a bit. But for those who were just maybe tuning in, I think some of the highlights of this ordinance include the, the premise for requiring the public art. So I think it's actually kind of helpful, too, to think back about just our very last application that we were just talking about, where the question was raised, you know, what about the public art? And I think that was part of this conversation initially, is that often, that would be something that would be added in by an applicant as we considered a planned unit development. But we didn't have a lot to say about that. We didn't have much of a standard or guidelines to what would be appropriate. And so this ordinance tries to kind of memorialize that in writing, so that when this comes up and an applicant is in one of these certain redevelopment districts, and again, looking back at the 2024 master plan, the special planning areas, we threw conversations with the planning commission. The planning commission had concerns that this might be spread too far, and they really thought it would be useful to focus it in on some of these corridors that we've been talking about, the need for revitalization and new interest. And so those include Orchard Lake Road between 12 and 13 and a half mile, the 14 Northwestern Orchard Lake Road area, Grand River Corridor and M5 interchange, Grand River and Drake, the M5 corridor, the eight mile corridor, the 12 mile corridor, the freeway redevelopment areas, and any proposal projects used, using the planned unit development process. And these are not just for any developments that would come in, but rather having a threshold of $2 million of investment. Those are the construction costs. Additionally exempt would be the single-family residential construction projects. And there, that budget would then fluctuate, the amount, the half percent of that total project cost, that can go up with the Consumer Price Index, specifically, the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, which was pointed out as the measure that we should be using. The rest of this section that's proposed to go into the zoning ordinance really gives the planning commission some idea, and applicants an idea of where these public art installations should occur, really trying to make sure that we're not blocking visibility, making sure that it's, these things are being seen, and that they're going to be allowed in front setbacks, should that be necessary based on the size or configuration of the property. There are some, a list of exemptions, and if someone was so interested, they could, and they felt that they didn't have maybe the visibility or the location on their property to install a piece of public art, that they could make a donation to the art fund, or a combination of both of those things. There are also standards for the installation and maintenance, ongoing care of these installations as we go forward. So this is the zoning portion of the, of the arts amendment that will be part of the public hearing. The other subsequent component gives the Farmington Area Arts Commission the ability then to work with the applicant on the actual art installation itself, something that keeps that separate with the body that has the most expertise in that area, leaving the planning commission to really be looking at where is this going, what is the size and scale of it, and how does it fit. So happy to answer any questions that you might have on that.
Okay. Any questions before we open the hearing? Now, we've talked about this a few times. All righty. In that case, I am opening the public hearing. Are there any cards?
There's that.
Okay. Then I am closing the public hearing. And is there a motion? Dr. Bruce?
I would move the introduction of an ordinance amending the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, zoning, Article 2.0 definitions, in order to add new definitions, and Article V site standards, in order to add a new section 34-5.20, public art requirement relating to the inclusion of art within certain new development approvals, zoning text amendment one, 2025, CMR 10-25-134.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Any discussion?
Yeah, just let me make a comment. As you've commented, we've already discussed this a lot. But I think it's worth pointing out, just in summary, there's a consideration of not wanting to be a barrier to people coming into the city for investment. We don't have artificial disincentive. But I think where we've landed here, I think is a good outcome. I think it's going to, it's going to, it's going to be positive for the city. And I think having it focused on certain areas in the way it is, I think is a, is a good outcome. So I think I very much support this as a, as an outcome.
Okay, thank you. Then this is a roll call vote.
Council members, Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Bolowar?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Mayrich?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then part B, public hearing and consideration of the introduction of an ordinance to of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the city of Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter two administration, Article four, boards, commissions, and councils, Division eight, Farmington Area Arts Commission. In order to amend Section two dash two 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 purposes, authority, and duties, City Code Amendment three, two thousand twenty-five. Hello again.
Hello again. As previously mentioned, this is a fairly small but significant change to the city code to put into codification the approval authority for these. We are going to be working my office with special services and the liaison to the arts commission to develop the policies and procedures that will support this change to the code.
Thank you. Any questions before we open the hearing? All right, we will open the hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak? Okay, I will now close the hearing. And as the liaison to the commission, Ms. Boloware, did you want to make the motion?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion that we introduce an ordinance to amend the city of Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter two, administration, Article four, boards, commissions, and councils, Division eight, Farmington Area Arts Commission. In order to amend Section two dash two 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 purposes, authorities, and duties, City Code Amendment three, two thousand twenty-five, CMR ten, twenty-five, one thirty-four.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Yes, I, I am so happy to see us get our arts commission involved in this very important effort that we're leading to display public art and make that a part of our PUD process, subject to certain dollar thresholds and some of our corridors, that twelve mile, eight mile, Grand River corridor. This is a happy day, I'm so happy. I know that we have three of our art commissioners in our audience, including the chair of the art commission, and I'm happy, I am just so happy. I'm thrilled for this ordinance. I, I'm just thrilled.
Anyone else? Mr. Bridges.
Yes, I want to also, I know this has been one of the mayor's goals as well, to be involved in public art, so I wanted to, she took the lead on this issue to make public art part of our, our process more, and she deserves credit for bringing this for council and fighting for it and integrating into the process we spoke about this evening. So, thank you for that.
Mr. Bridges. And as a former arts commissioner myself, I'm delighted. This is great. So roll call vote.
Yes. Council members, Dwyer?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes. All righty. Okay, item six, public hearing in consideration of the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four zoning, Article two definitions, Section thirty-four dash two point two definitions, to amend the definition of restaurant, drive-in, and add the definition of commercial outdoor recreation space, and Article three zoning districts, Section thirty-four dash three dot one dot twenty-four, B two community business district, to delete reference to automobile service center and replace with automobile repair, zoning text amendment four, two thousand twenty-four. Good evening again.
Good evening. So this is a cleanup ordinance, is typically the category that we would put this into. This does relate to our progress in the master plan and zoning text amendments. It relates to making sure that we have language that is something that's a little bit more modern, something that matches the current situation within the community. So we're updating and changing the definitions for these three items. I don't know that you called out that the third item is to add in the definition of commercial outdoor recreation space. That was previously undefined, and we had only an indoor recreational space. The code does add that definition in as well.
We'll make sure it's part of the motion.
Yes, we will.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, all right, then we will open the, any questions before we open the public hearing? All righty, we are opening the public hearing. No one rushing forward. We are closing the public hearing. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Sure.
Ms. Noel?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the, for the introduction of an ordinance to amend the Farmington Hills Code of Ordinances, Chapter thirty-four zoning, Article two definitions, Section thirty-four dash two point two definitions, to amend the definition of restaurant, drive-in, and add the definition of commercial outdoor recreation space. And Article three zoning districts, Section thirty-four dash three point one point twenty-four, B dash two, community business district, to delete reference to automobile service center and replace with automobile repair, zoning text amendment four, two thousand twenty-four, and that's CMR ten dash twenty-five dash one three five.
Okay, thank you.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Is there any further discussion? Okay, this is a roll call vote.
Council members, Noel?
Yes.
Aldred?
Yes.
Boloware?
Yes.
Bridges?
Yes.
Bruce?
Yes.
Dwyer?
Yes.
Mayor Rich?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that then takes us to new business. Item seven, consideration of adoption of a resolution approving renewal of the Uniform Video Local Franchise Agreement with DirecTV LLC. Good evening.
Good evening. I'll address this issue fairly briefly, because the state statutes have basically taken away most of the city's authority to negotiate these agreements for franchises under Act four eighty. We've provided a letter to city council outlining that. It is a renewal of an existing franchise agreement that is in place. DirecTV has taken over this, been assigned this, this franchise in the past, and they are coming in for renewal. It's a ten-year period. And if you have any questions regarding it, the franchise agreement is what it is. It's a state created, they legislated the actual agreement itself. So we are in it, still able to get franchise fees, which are identified as peg fees and service fees. And a certain percentage were limited in what we can do there. And it has to be consistent with the other franchises, unless agreed otherwise. And they have agreed to the amounts that you see reflected in the agreement. So with that, I'll just let it come to council. And if you do have any specific questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Yeah. Is there a motion?
Motion.
It's Alderman.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the renewal of the Uniform Video Local Franchise Agreement with DirecTV LLC.
Motion, is there support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Any questions? Dr. Bruce.
I'm going to vote no on this, just as a protest vote, because I don't like the idea of a loss of local control. We should be able to determine what happens within our city boundaries, who we negotiate with, how we negotiate with them, what do we get from products and services that come in here? And that should really be our domain. But Lansing has taken away so much of our ability to control what happens within our borders, whether it's satellite TV, garbage bags of plastic or paper, whatever, little things, big things. So I used to do this on the water rate increases when it came before us, and we just had to approve them, because if not, they'd shut our water off. And so every once in a while, I would do a protest vote on that. So I'm going to do it on this, and that's why. I know it's got to pass, but it doesn't have to be unanimous.
Yeah, I just wanted, if America could, just basically echo those comments that Councilmember Bruce has been a long advocate regarding local control. And I remember you and I served on the council when this was first passed, about ten, fifteen years ago. And we saw that slippage of control, local control. We see that also in cable situations as well, looking at spectrum. We can't bring spectrum in and really get them involved in service issues as well, too, we can't really speak about some, some things publicly. So we have lost control in regards to some of the core utility services that residents in our community count on. City, city council has very little jurisdiction nor influence on those particular entities. And so again, just wanted to echo that comment you made there regarding that. I'll be voting for it, but I just wanted to let you know this is my comments about that. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? All righty, this is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye, no.
Thank you, and carries. Item eight, consideration of approval of appointments to various boards and commissions. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make the motion, Mayor, to approve the following appointments recommended by Mayor Rich. First is the Innovation, Energy, and Environmental Sustainability Committee. Rachel Quinn, length of term is three years, ending February first, two thousand twenty-nine. Rachel will be filling the open vacancy. Farmington Hills Historical Commission, Eli Leesky, length of term, three years, term ending February first, two thousand twenty-nine. Eli will fill the vacancy left by Pam Corel. Economic Development Authority Committee, Vicki Barnett, length of term, six years, term ending February first, two thousand thirty-two. Vicki will fill the regular vacancy left by Gerald Allen. Planning Commission, Eric Lindquist, length of term, three years, term ending February first, two thousand twenty-nine. Eric will fill the vacancy left by Marcia Varga. Children's Youth and Family, Daniel Perick, three-year term, ending February first, two thousand twenty-nine. And Johanna Taylor.
Joshua.
What is it?
Joshua.
Joshua, I'm sorry. Joshua Taylor, length of term, three years, term ending February first, two thousand twenty-nine. Joshua will fill the vacancy left by David Peter. Those are my.
We have a motion, is there support?
Vote.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Okay, this is a regular vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Great, thank you. And I'd like to identify Mr. Lindquist is in the audience with us this evening. He has served for seventeen years on the Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome to the planning commission, sir. All righty. Then this takes us to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes. We need you to please fill out a blue card. Stephen, I know you have ride issues, so if you would like to go first, please feel free if you wanted to speak again this evening. Are you good?
Good.
Stephen, you're good? Okay, okay, great. Jim White? Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jim White. I am a resident of Farmington, but I'm here tonight on behalf of the Farmington, Farmington Hills Education Foundation. I'm a board member for the foundation. And I'm here to thank the council members and other Farmington Hills city officials for their previous support for the education, and particularly for its annual toast to education. And the toast is coming up again this year, November seventh. And I just wanted to re-extend the invitation to all of you and to anyone within the sound of my voice to come to this year's toast. The toast is the largest, or it's our single biggest fundraiser for the foundation. And because of the efforts of the foundation, we've been able to distribute hundreds of thousands of dollars to Farmington students in the form of scholarships or by creating grants for projects that serve Farmington Public School students. So again, I just really appreciate your support. And I just wanted everyone that's listening to the meeting tonight to, to know that the toast is coming up this year and that anyone is welcome to attend. Tickets are available online from the foundation website. And you can find that Farmington, Farmington Hills Education Foundation, and there's also a link on, if you don't remember that name, there's also a link on Farmington Public Schools website. So thank you very much.
Okay, daytime location?
The location is the Meridian site, so at the, at the corner of, what is that, eleven mile and Hagerty. So yes.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Angie Smith?
Good evening. Good evening. First, I'd like to share with each and every one of you, many of you have worked with her. Our executive assistant, Kathy Starrm, lost her battle with cancer on Saturday. Our condolences are going out to the family, and I want to share that with you all, because many of you have that relationship with Farmington Public Schools. On another note, we in this community, well, I hope most people, raise their children to be respectful and respect other people's property and to agree to disagree in a respectful way. As many of you know, that I am a candidate for city council. I myself, council member Randy Bruce, and council member Bruce, Michael Bridges, and I have been putting our signs out, and they're, they're being snatched up and stolen. You don't want to vote, you don't have to, but that is a felony. I have received a text message from an individual that accused us of putting our signs in inappropriate places at gas stations. Well, Mr. Bruce and Mr. Bridges, both have served on zoning, so they know where to put signs, as well as I do, because I'm a second-term runner for school board. But I even was told by the manager at a gas station, you don't want to mess with the people that own this. So they removed our signs and threw them in the garbage. I'm a twenty-eight-year resident here in Farmington Hills. Our signs are being taken down, they have been stolen. So I'm just saying, if you got your kids jumping out the car and you being the lookout, I'll press charges against them. If you're an adult that's doing it, I will press charges against you. These signs cost us money. They are not cheap, especially if you got a union label on them. So I ask humbly, if you don't like the candidate, leave the signs. Just don't vote. It's just like Metamucil, Docilex, just let it be smooth, and let's let it go. That's all my comments today. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Campo. Good evening.
Good evening, city council. My name is Annette Campo. I am a resident and homeowner at two seven eight six nine Farmington Road at the famous Farmington and Twelve Mile Corridor, which we know as being Kendallwood. I just want to bring up that I am very concerned about the property tax increases. They're affecting a lot of homeowners in our community to the escalation of thirteen to eighteen hundred dollars in escrow shortages that our homeowners are having to pay to their mortgage companies or accept a higher increase in monthly payments. What I do want to recognize, that obviously all of our taxpayer dollars do not stay here in the city of Farmington Hills, but we do have control over, over thirty percent of those property taxes here in our city, our great city of Farmington Hills. What I'd like to also explain is, is that I've done a sampling of over nine neighborhoods in our city, and it's consistently been incorrect information about how property taxes have been calculated out. In those samplings just recently, obviously, of course, I'm going to pick my neighborhood. Why would I not? Because I'm the one who's paying the most property taxes, and I live in a thirteen-hundred-square-foot house, and I'm literally spending five thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars a year for a thirteen-hundred-square-foot house, and I rounded it up on square footage. That in itself, to a house right next door, same square footage, same updates, same everything, three bedrooms, one and a half baths, property tax difference of twenty-two hundred dollars. That's happening throughout nine subdivisions in our city of Farmington Hills. And as a real estate broker of thirty-seven years, and a homeowner advocate, and a resident of city of Farmington Hills, I commend a task force be put together to analyze of how we are actually calculating our property taxes. Some of the proposals that I suggest is that obviously an independent review and audit on a committee is also is looking at possibly freezing our property tax increases. I'm not saying decrease them, because I love our fire, I love our safety, I love our services here in the city of Farmington Hills. But we have to be transparent in regards to how we're figuring out our property taxes across the board. A homeowner, for instance, that purchased a home in nineteen ninety-one, compared to a homeowner that purchased a home in two thousand eighteen, is a twenty-four hundred dollar difference for the exact same square footage, bedrooms, bathrooms, and location. That's a problem. So in closing, my final thoughts are transparency, fair, and accountability are three of the adjectives that I believe I would like city council to adopt and look into this growing problem. Thank you for your time and willingness to look at this.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to the city attorney report.
Thank you, Mayor. You have my report. I have no changes to it. It's current, as is.
Thank you. We are adjourned. Good night, Farmington Hills. We'll see you in two weeks.